The country, don't it?
Yeah.
I'm surprised that I can't...
If you're gonna be afraid of being on one, just go back to review.
The conclusions.
Sorry.
Okay, um, so we are, uh, on and I would like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board June twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen, uh, meeting, Memorial Town Hall, third floor conference room. It's a little bit after seven, uh, we do have a quorum. What we have on the agenda tonight are minutes, uh, vouchers, correspondence, uh, actually, there's no correspondence. We have two public hearings, uh, Bailey Lane, uh, and we have Georgetown Plaza. Georgetown Plaza's just requested a continuance. And then we have new business, uh, thirteen Summer Street and A and R Plan, and we have one A, one B, uh, rear Spalding Road as new business. And what we're going to do is, we're gonna do minutes and vouchers while we have the three of us here, uh, which is a quorum. And then we're going to go, the, I'm moving the agenda all around, uh, if the board is okay with this. Um, and then we're gonna go to Georgetown Plaza to continue the hearing. Hopefully by that time, the other two will be here and we can continue into then Spalding. I wanna get these folks addressed so that the rest can, most of them can get out. So with that, go into the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
Please.
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded to approve the minutes that were prepared for June fourteen, uh, June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen Planning Board Meeting. Any, uh, any comments?
I, I have one, Mr. Chairman. I have, uh, when it came about the zoning amendment...
Where might it be?
At, uh, page two of two, at the very last, uh, paragraph. Uh, I thought, uh, should be in here was the final...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Amendment that we had composed during the meeting and also that it was gonna be sent to the Board of, we have it to forward to the Board of Selectment, but I thought it should be also noted. And we discussed that Town Council should review our change in that amendment.
I remember what you're talking about, Tilly, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
I remember what you were talking about, but, um, I, I think that was not so much that it was going to be forwarded from us, but that John was gonna point out, when he forwarded it to the Board of Selectment, that we had made changes and through that process. And if I can, if I can just get a clarification, this still has to be, um, because it's zoning, if, doesn't this still need to have a public hearing before it can be presented to town meeting?
Yes.
So, we're gonna be seeing this again. If this isn't the final final.
I just, I just thought it would, it would, usually we get told when we send amendments to the Town Council, they're in a hurry, they hurry it up. So now we got time, I think, to send it to them and ask if it's okay, because he was present at the Selectment's meeting and he came out with, he handed us that copy. So, that's all.
I missed that meeting.
Hey.
But it should, I thought it should be in the minutes, that's all.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh, the minutes, the, the way they are, um, with the, the folks.
Go either way, if you wanna make a, a notation in the month, good with it. If, if Tilly's happy with it, I'm happy with it.
You're catching up.
I'm catching up.
All right.
The context.
One of the minutes, minutes of, uh, June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
So do you, do you have written down, Tilly, what you, how, what you'd like to see there?
To repeat the minutes, the, uh, the amendment that was submitted to the Selectment, I was assuming that it has already been done.
Uh, no, yeah, no.
No?
Correspondence is ready to go out, but, um...
All right, just repeat what everyone was, that we had approved it at this meeting.
Okay, so, John, can you do that? And then, um, I, I think we need to bring these minutes back, 'cause I, I don't know what you're gonna end up putting down there.
All right.
So all I'd like to do is table these minutes.
Table, Mr. Chairman.
And, uh, bring them to the next meeting with the addition. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
It's been tabled. Uh, moving on to vouchers.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Uh, motion to approve the voucher for thirty-four ninety-nine, uh, for the fan.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher and the amount of thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents for a new fan to keep those hardworking people in that hot office cool.
Did it work?
Yes, yeah, a little bit.
Any discussion?
Only that, um, that's the original price. I looked at the voucher and, uh, there at the receipt, and this does not include the tax that was paid, and I think we are paying for the tax.
No, can't do it. Can't do it.
Can't do it?
Nope.
There is a tax on it.
No, that, that's not inclusive of the tax.
Oh, that's right. Forty-nine ninety-two is the total.
Yeah, the, the, the town will not pay a tax. I've been through this so many times.
This is a reimbursement, this isn't paying the tax. She paid the tax. This is reimbursing her for that tax.
What was the eleven dollars?
Her expenditure.
What happened?
Who's, who's, who's gonna... I'll give her two dollars and nineteen cents for the tax personally, I don't know, personally while it is, next week, next meeting. Okay.
Well...
Sorry.
No problem.
Um, well, let me, let me just clarify though, this is, this didn't come out of Andrea's pocket.
I, it did, this is for reimbursement for Andrea.
Yeah, she purchased it.
She purchased it.
And then we're reimbursing her, this isn't reimbursing the office.
Right.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe pay cash or something. Oh, I take your point and, uh...
She shouldn't.
What happens is when, when you make a purchase for the town like that, you're, the, it's, the onus is on you to take the tax exception number and present it.
What was the eleven dollars and ninety-one cents?
Been through this, been through this.
No, Harry, Harry is right. Um, so, um, I'll chip in.
We'll take up, we'll take up a collection.
We'll throw a bucket.
Okay, so, uh, seeing...
Fifty-five cents.
Uh, seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, four yes, one absent. Okay, uh, we have no correspondence. Um, what we have for...
Okay.
Public hearings, and, uh, we have, uh, Bailey Lane, Georgetown Plaza, and, uh, new business, Summer Street and Spalding Road. Uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, change the order as we spoke. Georgetown Plaza is just requesting a continuance. Uh, if I could get a motion to that effect.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move for the request of the applicant's attorney, John Smolak, to continue the public hearing, date specific to the twenty-third of August twenty-seventeen Planning Board Meeting, to be regarding Georgetown Plaza, located at sixty-four seventy-four East Main Street, map eleven A, lot eighty-five.
In addition to that, um, motion, we need to open the meeting, um, first. That's on me. Um, so, you just kindly draw that and we'll settle.
Uh, okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the meeting, uh, the, for Georgetown Plaza, located at sixty-four seventy-four East Main Street, map eleven A, lot eighty-five, and, uh, per the request of applicant's attorney, John Smolak, to continue the public hearing date specific to August twenty-third, twenty-seventeen Planning Board Meeting.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the Georgetown Plaza, sixty-four seventy-four, uh, Main Street, East Main Street, uh, public hearing for purposes of, uh, rescheduling, continuing the hearing, specific to twenty-three August two thousand seventeen. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Um, okay, and then, uh, we are going to, um, go out of order based on the numbers of people that are here right now. What we're gonna do is we're gonna, um, go to one A, one B, rear Spalding Road, which is in the townhouse, uh, and then we're gonna go to Sims Development, uh, Bailey Lane. So, if the applicant for, uh, Spalding Road is here...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, uh, open the special permit hearing for one A, one B, rear Spalding Road.
Second. Uh, motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the special permit application hearing for one A, one B, rear Spalding Road. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Four yes, uh, one absent. Um, okay, uh, what we'll do is, uh, we're gonna go, John is gonna give the board a quick overview, and then we will go to the applicant for their presentation, and then, uh, we will go to the audience, uh, for comment, and then we will bring it back to the board and we'll, uh, we'll, 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 we'll sit here. So with that, uh, John.
Okay, um, this is a special permit application, uh, in accordance with section one sixty-five seventy-three, uh, subsections D and E of the zoning ordinance, and it's calling for the construction of a common driveway for two proposed residential, single-family dwellings. Uh, the address, the specific address, accordance with the town's addressing, one A and one B, rear Spalding Road, also shown in the tax assessors maps as map fifteen, lots twenty-nine A and twenty-nine B. And for the board this evening, there are two handouts, um, relative to this application. One is from the Conservation Commission agent, and the other is from, uh, two abutting party, uh, property owners, Catherine Vandy and Scott Frash.
Frash.
Frash. Both of those are one page.
So, uh, any, anything else, John, you wanna, uh, also?
Mr. Chairman, w- w- was that two letters from, from the butters?
Uh, one from, uh, the butter and the other one from Steve, Conservation Agent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So with that, uh, to the applicant.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'm Alan Grenier. If I could be seated here, the TV fellow said we gotta be fairly close to the mic. Uh, I'm an attorney with officers in Top Seal and I represent Barry Enos, who's here with me, operating manager of Colton Realty, Inc. It's, and John Moran from, uh, Moran and Cameron is gonna be here with us as well, our engineer. He's got a plan up on the board. I'd like him to give you a little history on the properties. Did he get away?
Nope.
Yeah, okay.
So we're approached by Mr. Enos to, uh, assist with the permitting of this property. Uh, the plan that you see before you, uh, is a plan that was endorsed by the Planning Board back in nineteen eighty-nine, uh, creating these two lots. Uh, it was actually showing two driveways coming in, uh, for each of the lots. However, because of, uh, the increase in the wetlands out on the property, uh, trying to cross on one B, it made more sense to file, uh, for a common driveway special permit, uh, to develop the properties instead of trying to, uh, have two wetland crossings. The wetlands actually come in on this side, they narrow down, and then they open up here, and then they open up out in the back. So, what we did is we actually, you know, took a look at your criteria for a special permit for a common driveway. Uh, can't serve more than three lots. Again, we're servicing two lots. Uh, it has to be on the lots it's shown. So what we did, uh, is we're proposing a single common driveway coming off of Spalding Road, service those two lots. Uh, we went out on the site with the Board of Health, uh, to do additional soil testing out on the site, to verify septic systems out on the property. We met with the fire chief, uh, because as you can see, uh, very limited space to try to build a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead turnaround. So we met with the fire chief in designing a turnaround, uh, at the Y for those two driveways that would be acceptable to the fire department. Uh, we would be bridging over the wetland, uh, to minimize wetland impacts. Uh, the two propos, uh, the two existing lots both comply with, uh, zoning standards. Uh, in order to develop one of the lots, we would actually have to move the lot line, so we would be filing an A and R Plan to relocate that lot line.
Open up to Mr. Grenier.
Any questions? I'll pass now.
So you're all set for the presentation at this point?
Well...
Because what we're gonna do is we're gonna, uh, go to the public and, uh, get their comments and concerns.
Okay.
And then we'll...
I'll be back to answer questions if you'd like.
And then we'll bring it back to the board. Uh, so, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, if you could, um, introduce yourself for the record, please.
I'm Janet Talbot. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm an abutter, but actually, I haven't even had a chance to see what the driveway or the whole plan looks like, and it's facing you, not us, so...
It has to face us, um, the camera, um, usually has that in place. Um, do we have this plan that we could get down?
Yeah.
This is submitted, uh, it's, it's, it's in the town hall also to take a look at.
And I guess, I mean, I remember years ago, this proposal was presented before that it came, and nothing had happened over the years, so I thought I was pretty lucky, um, that this happened, not at that point. Um, and I guess I really am concerned too, not only for myself, because it goes down my boundary line, but the poor people that live in the house on Spalding. I mean, it literally goes through their yard almost.
Thank you.
And I just don't know how, I mean, you have young kids, that they can think about putting a driveway so close to their house. It just doesn't, to me, make sense at all.
Okay.
And it looks from what I can tell quickly that it's in the same place as it was years ago.
Mr. Chairman, could I just get a clarification of what, where, where the young lady lives?
What?
Uh, could, could you show me where, where you...
Well, I'm, like, thirty-five, I'm the one beside it.
Janet Talbot, she was right here.
Yeah, I'm the one. And the wetlands in that area is pretty significant different times of the year. And sometimes it can be dry.
Consistently, we have a bee.
But, you know, most of, like, this time of the year, it's huge, really, really significant.
Okay, uh, wetlands concern and the driveway cutting so close to the, um, existing house?
And I wasn't sure how far from the boundary it would be on my side, 'cause it doesn't seem like there's a lot of room.
That's just pretty specific. Can you just answer that question, roughly how far the driveway is from the property line?
Yeah, the, the driveway from, uh, Ms. Talbot's property is about fifteen feet. Uh, there's actually an existing driveway that comes down that property, and we're actually moving, right now, there's an existing driveway that comes in off of Spalding, comes right in this location and dead ends. We're actually moving the driveway even further away from the existing house that's located there than that current driveway that exists. All right, and again, so you're about ten feet off the property line. That driveway is located within our lot.
And it was our, we're the...
Could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, Catherine Vandy. We're the residents of one Spalding Road, and...
And that, and that on the plan would be...
That would be that existing...
We're the accessway. Our, our residence is right next to it, and that was one of our, um, concerns, was the proximity of this proposed accessway to our home. Um, we do have young children. I know it's a concern of some other people in the neighborhood that they also have young children. Um, I also, the wetlands are a big concern. There are vernal pools, one I can see, two I can see from my home. And there's also, I found some species back there on our property, um, that would be of concern to the Conservation Commission, which I put in my email to y'all.
But our biggest...
We have, we have that, um, your correspondence, which was dated June twenty-seventh, and in it, uh, you talk about the location of the access as you just did. You talk about the safety concerns as you just did, uh, and you talk about the wetlands and the wildlife protection as you just did.
Absolutely.
So, um, so you're aware that Conservation Commission will address all of those issues in terms of wetlands and, and, uh, vernal pools and, okay, um...
Our biggest concern is, I'm Scott Frash, also one Spalding Road.
Okay.
But our biggest concern is the safety, because it's a, it's a hill downhill to this road that they're proposing. There's no fence. We have a two-year-old, a five-year-old, and they're, they're, they're running all over the place, and we're just concerned about this road that is now gonna be right next to our house, you know? Now they can watch two roads. It's just, we are not thrilled about that happening.
So we're, just, just for clarification, so we're not gonna get into answering the issues that you're putting on the table right now, but we're making note of what these issues are?
Yes.
And then as we continue to move forward, depending on how far we move forward, we'll start to bring these back up again.
Absolutely.
And if for some reason we miss one, don't hesitate to bring it up again.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sir? My name is Lee Craig, ree Spalding Road.
And that might be just for...
I'm here.
Okay.
So, uh, th- this cul-de-sac abuts this right-of-way, which abuts my property, and this right-of-way is my right-of-way as well to back. If you look at the tax map, there's a huge area behind that, and that's all of my property as well. This whole area below here, up to my land, and then back in here, is completely underwater. So, from the highway right back, completely underwater. There are two streams that run through there, one on the Cottle Drive side, and one on this side, and they both meet and go into the highway, but they are, they're completely underwater, the whole thing. If you drive down the highway, that's all you see is dead trees and water. So that's a concern of mine, that interruption of anything that happens back in here is gonna affect all of this wet, wetland that comes through. And I know that's a conservation issue, but we're concerned about it as well. They don't need to have more water coming out of the yard.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Okay, uh, so with that, um, I don't know if, uh, take it, bring it to the board, and what I'd like to do in terms of asking some questions, if the board has questions. Will wants to start first. Harry, you wanna start or...
Um, I, I'm gonna go individually.
Yeah, um, my questions are more towards, uh, legal history behind this. Um, use one of the references, uh, plant a land, and, um, I, I'm a little bit confused as far as, not confused, but I like, just like verification. Uh, in nineteen eighty-nine, the Planning Board at the time created this, I believe, as a subdivision, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, well, it, a little unusual. It's just a plan, a single plan, and that single plan, no decision to my knowledge. The plan was the decision. Um, my understanding, the, I'm gonna call them the bulbs, the little turnarounds, the bulbs. Did I see that? Those are actually creating the frontage for these two lots, for one A and one B. Is that correct?
I'll pass through us. John?
Yeah, when this original subdivision was created, there was actually, the reason why, from what we could tell based on the approval...
Yeah, that's it.
It was one page is because they actually granted a bunch of, um, waivers as well as part of the approval.
Yep.
And yes, these, at the time, were approved by the Planning Board. That's what created the frontage for those two lots. And these parcels are actually to be combined back
Yes.
to this lot. So this cul-de-sac is owned by Mr. Enos.
As, is the other one.
This cul-de-sac is part of that lot as well.
So that, that northernmost cul-de-sac, that, that finger, that, that is not an easement on, on the land of, um, these folks?
No.
That is a, that is a parcel?
Yes, it's a parcel.
Owned and joined with one?
Yeah, I believe in the notes on the plan state that, that those two parcels will be remained in common ownership. Those two parcels would be remain in common ownership.
So back in nineteen eighty-nine, this, these were two, the little lots. My understanding now is that you're requesting a lot line change, that center lot line between the two parcels, the two larger parcels, that's to be modified?
Yes.
And you're pulling it this way so that, so that you can put, squeeze the two houses in?
Yeah, the lot line originally was here, and it would actually bump out right there, so that would actually pull out. And it's really for the septic.
Right. Well, i- 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 forgive me if I'm wrong, that looks like it's probably one of the only upland areas where you're a hundred feet away from...
Correct.
A wetland area, right?
Yes.
Uh, we can come back.
Yeah, that's, I, thank you. I just needed that clarification.
Um, Robert?
No.
Okay, Tilly, sit here.
I'd like to go back to the crossing. You, on your, on the plan that I have, it says that you're gonna have a proposed wetland crossing, and you just said that you're eliminating the crossing?
No, that, what we were doing is, this original subdivision that was approved...
Yeah.
Would have been two wetland crossings.
Uh-huh.
You would have had a crossing through here to get across this wetland to get to this piece of upland, and then the crossing through here. By proposing the common driveway, we've eliminated the crossing that would be required through that wetland.
Hmm.
So we're eliminating, we still have a wetland crossing.
You still have the one?
Yes.
I got you. And the other thing is that you came in again after eighty-nine, with, what was it, two years ago you came in?
Here we go.
And then you withdrew without prejudice, and we had an outstanding bill because we did a legal ad prior to you withdrawing without prejudice.
We took care of that.
So did that ever get cleared up?
I got a notice on that, and I think, yeah, I, I came in with a check. I gave the check to John Cash.
For the, the old one?
I believe, yeah, that both of them were paid, but this one, the, the past one.
Both of them were paid. I gotta copy the check right here.
You don't forget.
Uh, I just wondered, 'cause we didn't get any answers, is what I was told when we checked with you, Barry. So anyway...
I got my check.
All right. Um, uh, well, I think a lot of the issues are the wetland, and that would be conservation.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, um...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a, um, I wanna clarify, um, one issue, uh, this evening in talking with Harry in regard to the plan itself. There was, our assessive maps show that on Mr. Craig's property... It was, our assessor maps show that on Mr. Craig's property, three Spalding Road, it's kind of an illusion whereby there's a freestanding accessory dwelling behind the primary dwelling at three, uh, Spalding. And it looks as though that accessory dwelling is on your client's property. Mr. Moore, can you clarify that for?
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Cashel actually gave me a call, and he said, you know, I'm looking at our maps, and it appears that there's actually an accessory structure already on lot one B. So what I did is I went onto your maps, and he was a hundred percent right, but what I found was the lot line for Mr. Craig's parcel, not only did it include the little parcel up front, but it included this entire piece of one B. It just called it all one lot, this lot line, right here, did not exist on the assessor map. However, if you went back and there was a map called like official town map of Georgetown, I think it was in twenty-eleven, it actually showed, it didn't have houses, or it just had streets and a couple, I think watershed overlay districts. It did show the correct lot in this location. So I don't know why the assessor's map is missing that lot line, but it was actually just showing this all as one big parcel. And that accessory building is right in here, so it looked as if it was an accessory building already on Mr. Enos's property. But again, that plant, that map was missing that lot line right there.
So did the eighty-nine?
Yeah.
Did the eighty-nine get, uh, subdivision, get, get registered?
Yes.
Oh yeah, this is recorded, this is the recorded plan right here. Plan book, um, two sixty-one, plan thirty-eight, so it's recorded.
Okay, Barry, you got something to talk about Thanksgiving. Dad, hasn't that happened?
That was recorded quite a while ago.
Any, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Am I correct, uh, bring it to, to the chair, am I correct, John, that, um, we would be looking at the, um, in the zoning bylaw, one sixty-five seventy-nine, required findings for granting a special permit?
Yes.
Okay, so, could the applicant answer for me? There are four criteria. A says the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare.
I never thought you'd ask.
And then D says the requested use will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character.
Okay.
So anyways, there's that list.
Want to do A and B?
However you want.
Well, what do you, you got C and D?
Why don't you go through them?
Okay, A, I think the members of the board, I don't wanna open my mouth, because I get complicated. I think the members of the board can see the quantity we're in. One, in order to construct two homes, and we have a subdivision showing two lots, we'd have to approach the Conservation Commission and seek two wetlands crossings. Now, conservation rules and regulations require that any construction in, in or near the wetlands be done so as to minimize the impact on wetlands, their concern is wetlands. So we proposed the issue to John and his partner. And what we came up with is this plan right here, now what this plan does is minimize the construction on or near the wetlands, first by eliminating one crossing completely. Second of all, we've got a driveway located, coming off of the cul-de-sac, and by, by moving one of the homes, we can meet border health regulations, we can minimize wetlands' impact. But we, what we've gotta find out is, we're gonna find out if the planning board would give us a special permit, as we've requested, a special permit to have a common driveway, because if we waited till the end of the process, and you said, I don't think that's good, then all that engineering that we've done for the Conservation Commission would go to naught. And what we'd have to do is go back to the two, go back and approach them with the two-crossing plan. We thought it eminently reasonable to approach the planning board first. The conservation statute requires, and I can go through and read it, I've always known this to be the case, but I haven't looked it up in many a moon. But it requires that we go to the conserva, obtain all the other permits first, and go to the conservation last. Members of the board so far don't seem averse to that, that's what the law says. So what we would like to do, if the board is willing to favor us with an approval, we understand full well that we've got a long road to hoe with the Conservation Commission. Now, what's the impact to the public? We've got a two, Mr. Enos is not a professional developer, I take it, although he's built a few things. We're just trying to get two houses on a piece of land that's already been divided for two lots, it's as simple as that. We're trying to do it in a manner to minimize impact on wetlands and satisfy all the other town requirements, and some state requirements, I take it.
So I, I understand all of that, um, and I'm only speaking for myself, but, um, I don't know what the intent was of the planning board that approved the original plan, and I'm not gonna try to figure that out. What I can do, though, um, is look at the plan graphic, and what the plan graphic that was approved tells me is that they approached this where they were saying, we're gonna have two entrances to the back, therefore we have these two that Harry called bulbs, to create the appropriate frontage. And what's happened is that, fast forward to today, that intent is really, um, being put aside, and what you're saying is we wanna develop the same two houses that we got the paper frontage for by the second bulb, but we wanna bring them through, for the reasons of wetlands, we wanna bring both through the uptop part. I have a hunch if it had been presented that way to the original planning board, when this plan was looked at, they may or may not have approved the plan that they approved, but by approving the plan that they approved, it just implies to me that they were looking at two entrances, way to get back there. I, I guess I'm struggling with a paper, uh, a paper's, uh, frontage on that second bulb. The land was meant, because of the frontage that truly exists, that land was meant for one lot, not two. And I'm only speaking for myself, but it's why the frontage is so hard to work with there. It's why you've had to do this incredible crafting, to add this additional cul, this additional bulb, to create this false frontage, so that you can get two lots back there. That piece of land is all wetland, there's a small upland back there, and the frontage that's on Spalding says to me that that land, uh, is consistent with one lot, not two. So, um, I, I, I'm, I'm pretty clear for myself that I, I can't support a special permit, uh, moving forward for a driveway, which I think is effectively, uh, for, for the reasons of, of the regulations that we have to, to fall, to follow for required findings, but that's me, that's my take on it, and, um, I, I don't, so I'll bring it back to the board, and, um, I'm just one member, um, and what you all think.
I, I don't, I don't see, uh, much in the way of frontage for lot one B rear at all. I don't see where, where it's calculated, um.
That they have here is they use this.
Yeah, but that's not, here's the. And this is the front.
Do you want me to have the engineer show you where the frontage was initially?
I don't really care.
Okay, okay.
Well, how would the board, um, like to proceed? There were a number of motions that had been drafted by John as possible motions, um, in terms of moving this forward.
I just interject here, um, the second one, I don't know if the board is actually ready to do anything to this effect, but that's a motion to accept the, uh, special permit application. We opened the public hearing, but that wasn't done. So I don't know if the board, uh, wants to do that, but.
I will, I, I, um, let me find the appropriate wording, Mr. Chairman, and I, I'll make that motion.
It's motion number two on page three of the staff report.
I move to accept the special permit application, calling for the construction of a common driveway for two proposed residential single-family dwellings located at, more appropriately, one A rear and one B rear Spalding Road, map fifteen, lots twenty A and twenty-nine B, is that correct? Those correct map lot numbers?
Um, twenty-nine A and twenty-nine B.
Twenty-nine A and twenty-nine B, oh, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Twenty-nine.
Yes.
Do I have a second? This is just to accept the application?
I'll second.
Motion was made, and it was seconded to, uh, accept the special permit application, on the construction of a common driveway for two proposed residential single-family dwellings located at one A and one B Spalding Road, map fifteen, lot twenty-nine A and twenty-nine B, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that, John. So, um, how do the other members feel? I mean, if you, if you guys wanna move this forward and support this in that regard, you can keep, you know.
I just, for myself, I just, I just can't approve it without the conservation going through this.
Legally, we're required to go to the planning board first.
I know, but you're asking for a decision from us first.
Right.
I, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable with that at all. So I would, I would deny it.
I don't, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't think though, Tilly, that that's a, a basis that we can deny on. I, I think we have, you know, anything in the ordinance, um.
It's the lack of information.
Wait for that.
Uh, can I ask a procedural question? The hearing's been opened. We're in the process of gathering information. It, it, it sounds as though you're doing this in a serial fashion, where you wanna have a permit in hand, approved, and appeal period done, before you walk into the Conservation Commission's office.
You have to know which way we're going.
That it's going to be a parallel track, so to speak?
Yes.
If, if this is going to be a parallel track, then I, I would suggest we start doing stormwater calculations for this roadway, because that's gonna be an impervious area. And we'd establish an M account, and we would begin the process. And then with that parallel track, we could continue this naturally, we'd have to give us extensions of time, and.
Let me throw out an alternative, you can approve it subject to conservation approval.
No, we can't.
We don't do that.
All right. You could.
You can do a lot of things, but that isn't one of them.
Yeah, I'm good, John.
Yeah, there, there's probably a, a couple of relative routes we can take. One, the first one being, um, as was taken last year, the planning board could ask, you know, respectfully, a withdrawal of this application. This is taking into consideration that realistically, these are not buildable lots until you get your wetland permits in place.
No, the statute says otherwise, I mean, it's.
I mean, it's, it's an issue that you have to resolve with the conservation, the planning board doesn't have the authority, to issue wetland special permits, that's with the Conservation Commission. The other avenue the board could take is to, um, approve the application in accordance with the sections of the zoning ordinance that are cited in the staff report. It does not, approval by this planning board of this plan does not allow for you to pull a building permit on either one of the lots. You still have to get the wetland permit from Conservation Commission.
All of them.
The other, the other way, you know, is this actual frontage, or is it illusory frontage?
I, I feel that it's lack of information for myself. I'm not, I'm not voting for anything without, and I will vote no, uh, without conservation, whatever they recommend after they review it, because this, to me, is, is a big wetland issue. And I would like to see something happen here, I know, uh, the applicant has tried several ways, and I fully support it based on the finding of, uh, conservation, and I feel that's lack of information for myself to deny it.
So the board, right now, there's four of us here, and this is a special permit, so this has to be a unanimous vote from the four that are here, just FYI. Um, so that's something to take into account, Matt, I, I wasn't aware Matt wasn't gonna make it tonight.
Not gonna withdraw.
In terms of withdrawing, uh.
No, we won't withdraw. Uh, if there's a denial here, we'll just take an appeal, we'll get that resolved in court, then we'll come back. I hope you have a big legal budget.
Are you threatening to sport?
I, I.
I'm sorry.
I, I, um.
That's why I'm here, I got my appeal t-shirt on under here.
So I, I, I wanna, you know, uh, piggybacking on, on those kind words, I wanna, um, uh, just highlight required findings for granting of a special permit. The requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. I have not been convinced of that at all. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. District versus neighborhood versus a butter, two lots going on one driveway versus one lot, one driveway. Uh, I, I see, I don't see, I don't see you meeting that criteria. D, the requested use will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, which was the first part that I tried to, I'm sure, poorly explain. But that land, when you take away the wetlands, when you take a look at the actual frontage that you truly have on Spalding, the zoning ordinance, the intent behind it, the whole shebang was written, so that that says, yep, you've got enough frontage for one lot, when you put all of that together. And what, what has happened is you have these, you have this second, you've created artificial frontage, and not only are you not having two driveways come in, one separate, one separate, which you know Conservation Commission would never approve, you've now loaded those two driveways into one driveway, um, which, uh, again, I, I, so for me, the denial is gonna be based on that criteria.
I can't believe I'm in this situation, where I'm looking at this as something that was done in eighty-nine. And if a building permit was pulled in ninety, or ninety-one, there'd be houses there right now. And I cannot, because I know what the regs were with Hong Kong, and I, I've seen permits, Hong Kong permits from there. And I, I just can't get out of my head, I, I'm, I'm speaking like Matt would be speaking right now. These, these two lots in nineteen ninety had value. And there is a presumption on the property law that a parcel has value. Some people immediately take advantage of it and build upon it, other people put it in a bank and look at it as, the Supreme Court would look at it as an investment property.
But that value, but that value that you're talking about, that was created from two lots, was artificially created for an unreal world.
I would, I would say that that is one way of looking at it, Rob, from our cap perch in twenty-seventeen.
Well, no, I'm talk.
But back in, back in.
I'm talking about looking at it based on the ordinance.
Back in nineteen eighty-nine, when a planning board voted to create that plan, they created that frontage.
Correct.
they created that frontage, which they had every legal right to do.
Yep.
And although I wince when I see those bulbs all over the maps in this town, I wince. It does not change the fact that those are legal subdivisions. If I could change it with a wave of my hand, I would, believe me, but I can't. And we're locked into that. I, I believe, under national law, we're locked into that. That is legal frontage as of today, as of right now.
And you, and you know, Harry, you gotta keep, keep in mind that the, the common driveway bylaw, the intent was to create frontage.
Excuse me?
That, yeah. Common driveway was there for, to create frontage. That was the reason that I wasn't involved with the decision of the amendment. But that's our explanation. I didn't bring my books, but that's how it's defined.
Not fault, I'm not fault.
And, and the thing is, is that the, he already has frontage, according to his subdivision plan, to do this.
He does.
So I think that he knows that there's, you know, why he changed it.
We don't have dry access.
I mean, John, they would not be before this planning board, except for the fact that they can apply for a special permit for a common driveway. That's why they're here. If that, that ordinance was not in place, they would have to actually create the frontage that's shown on this plan here, before they would be issued a building permit. So those would be two little cul-de-sacs that would have to be constructed. Otherwise, there is no frontage. So those are paper streets. They don't exist. They're not entitled to building permits. It's just that this town allows for common driveways under special permit conditions. As the chairman's pointing out, those laws that are in effect, they have to meet the criteria of A, B, C, and D. So discretionary, some might opine that's the case with these. But, you know, that is the board's discretion. That language exists. And if they don't meet the muster of that language, everybody here is entitled to their opinion. And that's how the decision is derived at, so.
Okay.
So could we maybe move this forward to someone make a motion, one way or the other?
I don't know if the board's gonna want to second my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you have to, you have to make a motion to, in the affirmative, for a special permit. So you have to do it.
I don't think they're gonna want to hear it. I don't think I'm gonna get a second. My, my, my motion would be to establish an M account and do a stormwater analysis of that shared driveway and to continue this hearing to the 28th of August. That would be my motion. That would give them time to move forward with moving to Kong Kong. Well, so I think that means that they, look, it was, it was someone who asked.
No, you're not gonna get a second.
That was my, I didn't, it doesn't sound like a motive.
Okay, you're right there.
Does someone want to make a motion in the affirmative?
All right. I make a motion to approve the special permit for Spalding Road. What is the name of this?
You could follow if you wanted to. It's on page three. It's motion number five.
Okay.
John, only because I, Tilly, as you're looking at that, and you haven't made a motion yet, only because I know where I stand on this. If the board were to vote for yes to grant the special permit, we haven't had any discussions which would address the issues of the neighbors. So what would be an affirmative motion that would allow this to move forward, but would then give us the opportunity, which is kind of related to what Harry was talking about, which is more review? Continue the hearing.
Yeah, that would be number four.
That would be number four?
And that would, that would be a continuation of this either to the July 12th or the August 23rd. August 23rd is probably more appropriate.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make that motion if I thought they would get a second. And, but again, if, if, with the presumption of making that motion, I would also argue that we, in the public hearing process for the special permit, regularly establish an M account and begin our stormwater review. That, I mean, there, there's a wetland area. You're talking about creating.